Good evening. I'd like to call the May 22nd, 2019 Regular Board Meeting the Methacton School District Board of Directors to order. Please rise for the pledge. Thank you, everyone. By way of announcements, the public is hereby advised of the audio and video recording of this meeting for the purposes of rebroadcasting. For attendance, we have all board members in attendance this evening with the exception of Ms. Reese, who is sick. Recognition of guests and scheduled speakers, Dr. Zerby.
Good evening, and thank you, Ms. President. This evening, we have a number of guests and scheduled speakers. It gives me great pleasure to introduce Nikki Kralovich and Mr. Jim Beam from the Methacton Education Foundation. Ms. Kralovich?
Thank you, Dr. Zerby, school board directors, and public. My name is Nikki Kralovich. I'm the Executive Director for the Methacton Education Foundation. We raise money to help kids in Methacton. Our job is to bring in private dollars to fund those programs that are above and beyond the district budget. We focus on funding STEM programs, career and college readiness, programs for economically disadvantaged students, and one of our newest areas of funding, which we just added last month, is student wellness. Tonight, we would like to thank our generous donors because we are thrilled to award a check to the Methacton School District for $11,000, $11,200 specifically to Methacton High School programs. We're awarding four different grants tonight. $2,000 for the Robotics Club, $3,500 for the Electric Car Club, $3,200 for College Tours, and, for the first time, thanks to our new category of funding for student wellness, $2,500 for post-prom. We'd like to thank Mr. Savitz, Mr. Sawyer, Mrs. Johnson, and the Post-Prom Committee, along with the donors and volunteers who made these grants possible. We thank you all for helping to, for helping Methacton to climb higher.[169.04][169.04][applause] We'd like to invite everyone from the Electric Car Club, the Robotics Club, and Post-Prom, and the College Tour programs to come down for the check presentation. As well as Methacton Education Foundation Board Members, please.
The Methacton Education Foundation has, as for the last probably 12 to 14 months, have been before the school board presenting checks just like this. It's a tremendous opportunity, a tremendous relationship, and I can't thank the President, Mr. Beam, and our Executive Director, Mrs. Kralovich, for all the work that they do, and all the board members, and for the generous contributions that come from our community and beyond. So again, thank you so much for all that. This evening, in addition to the check presentation, I want to share that we have M-Awards for Unified Sports and Track. Mr. Alzamore is here with us this evening, one of two coaches for the program. These M-Awards are the highest honors that can be bestowed upon a Methacton student. While they, while a lot of students may get awards for academic endeavors and athletic endeavors, these are awarded from the school board to students who represent the all that is good with the Methacton School District and community. So with that, I have the certificates here. I'm going to bring them up for Mr. Alzamore.
The team consists of Quinn Adams, Javier Alvaro, Trevor Christmas, Maria Clark, Maria Coyle, Justin Filippo, Kevin DeSanto, Haley Drake, Paul Fries, Daniel Lutz, Dana Mioli, Regan Scudlick, Laura Thorne, Jorson Tojo, and Madeline O'Gee.
Just going to wait about a minute. Next on, next on our agenda, we have for the third straight year in a row, and a truly tremendous announcement, the 2019 Best Communities for Music Education. Mr. Tom Kelly is here from Zezwitz to present that award again for the third straight year. Mr. Kelly, I know I saw you earlier. There we are.[641.32][641.32][applause]
Good evening, Dr. Zerby, members of the board, ladies and gentlemen in the audience. I only hope I can be as good as the 11-2 check and the M-Awards that were just presented to those young individuals. What an awesome job. My name again is Tom Kelly. I'm the education representative from Zezwitz Music. Zezwitz is also a member of the NAMM Foundation, that's the National Association of Music Merchants, and I come here as an adjunct representative of the NAMM Foundation. I have close ties here to the Methacton School District. Not only is this your third year consecutively of getting this award, but, but I had the opportunity to, to do some teaching here back in '98, and up until Mr. McCouch took over the program, I had the opportunity to be the marching band director. So I'm coming home, as it were. Wonderful things happened here in the Methacton School District. I'm very honored to, to be here tonight to present this award. Just a little background, the NAMM Foundation is in their 20th season, and this particular program was developed so that school districts could, could apply for this particular accolade. And I will tell you that it's no short, easy process. This year, the application, I believe it was done by Mrs. Baslik, as well as the rest of the staff, included 32 pages of essay questions, very detail and very, well, a lot of detail within the music program, whether it be the Title I programs, the, the performance opportunities, the educational opportunities. Actually, they go into where the, the students can practice. Do you have adequate facilities? So again, very, very detailed. Just because you apply for this particular accolade doesn't mean that they just give it out. Just to give you some scope and sequence, there's 13,588 school districts in the country. 623 were actually presented this award. Several thousand did apply. That leaves Methacton in the 95th percentile in terms of enriching the lives of others I tell you, it is, it is no easy feat. I work with most of the staff on a weekly basis, whether it's rehearsals, performances, going to Hershey Park, Dorney Park, football games, community events, and supporting. They are tireless in their effort. So your continued support, the support of the community, again, this is a holistic type of approach because it is really recognizing the community, because it does take the parents, the tireless hours of getting to and from rehearsals, and obtaining instruments, the support financially and, and from a scheduling standpoint, from the administration, to give the teachers here in the Methacton School District the opportunity to shine. And I tell you what, each and every one of them are very dedicated to their discipline and their craft. Should be honored to have them. I love working with them, and, and it's, it's an honor to be here this evening. So, the staff, come on down. Great photo op. Dr. Zerby, please. Oh, you're right. In the middle, in the middle, in the middle, in the middle. Congratulations. Thank you. In the middle. The plaque that I'm about to present to Dr. Zerby and the rest of the department is from the NAMM Foundation. A large promotional package has, has been sent out. A lot of, a lot of what you see here is only a small portion of what can be utilized in terms of the promotional value. And, and the placard says, "Salutes Methacton School District for Outstanding Support of Music Education, Enriching the Lives of Children, and Advancing Student Achievement." Having the opportunity to be at the band banquet here for Methacton on several occasions, at the end, the seniors get up, and they, they say where they're going to school. And not to begrudge the Montgomery County Community College, some of them do go there, but when you hear Brown, Harvard, Cornell, and the list goes on and on, it's a testament that music does enrich the lives of students here in the Methacton School District. So, congratulations once again.[931.86][931.86][applause]
Again, thank you, Mr. Kelly, and thank the NAMM Foundation for recognizing the great work that our teachers, parents, and students do for, with music in the Methacton School District. Next on the, on the agenda is staff recognition. This evening, it gives me great pleasure to introduce Dr. Troy Sisnovick. Dr. Sisnovick will be introducing one of, I believe, five individuals that we're recognizing this evening. Dr. Sisnovick?
Thank you, Dr. Zerby. I'm going to wait till you get all the way down here. So it's my privilege and honor to recognize a wonderful staff member of ours, Ms. Nina Smith. A little bit...[1051.58][1051.58][applause] A little, a little about Nina. She came to us as an instructional assistant in 2006. After a short stint as an IA, she transitioned to the high school counseling office as a counseling secretary for the next nine years. I was fortunate to have Nina become a member of my team in 2015 when we formed our central registration office. And let me tell you, there's no way I'm giving her back.
We'll see.[1081.33][1081.33][laughter]
Nina is truly everything a district would want and hope for as a central registrar. Being the central registrar, she is often the first contact parents have with our district. Her bright smile and warm personality makes a strong and lasting first impression for our parents and students rolling, enrolling at Methacton. She possesses the perfect temperament whereby she's kind, supportive, and patient. Her dedicated and thoughtful approach is reassuring, reassuring and appreciative by families that might be experiencing anxiety over enrolling a student for a first time or transitioning from another school. To sum it up succinctly, Nina is awesome.[1124.02][1124.02][laughter] Please know, we all appreciate everything you do for us sincerely. We appreciate it, all you do for our family, our students, and staff. And at this time, I would like to declare this day to be henceforth known as National Nina Smith Day.[1140.50][1140.50][laughter] Wait a second, I don't have that type of authority, so I guess your certificate's just going to have to do.
Next, I'd like to ask Dr. Angstad to come forward, please, for the next award.
So I would like to introduce Odell DeWalt. Can you come down, Odell? It is my privilege to introduce Odell DeWalt to you. He has been working for Methacton School District since he started as a casual and call custodian in September 2014. His hard work and dedication to the job earned him a full-time position in December 2016. Since accepting his full-time position, he has proven himself many times over to be the go-to employee. Odell is very reliable and always willing to go above and beyond to get the job done. He is friendly and kind, and always patient with those of us that he interacts with throughout the day, and that is part of what makes him a valuable member of the facilities team. On a personal note, I can say that at the end of my day, and for many people at Farina, he is our bright spot at the end of the day, and I can't thank you enough for what you do.
Next, I'd like to ask Lindsay Burke from Aramark to come down.
All right. Hi, everyone. I'm so happy to be here tonight to recognize Lisa Gambone. Lisa has been with us in the Methacton Food Service Program since 2011. She was nominated for this award because she goes above and beyond every single day to provide great customer service by engaging with our students and providing a warm and welcoming environment. She wears so many hats in the kitchen. She prepares pizza for both our Cola and Skyview, is responsible for stocking many coolers daily, serves our students during lunch, and assists our cooks with food prep and distribution. If a student has a special request or a question about the menu, she's on it. Each day before lunch, she puts together a beautifully arranged show plate to display the main entree of the day, which helps our students decide on what meal they want. When you come through her serving line, it's evident that she takes great pride in her work. She truly embodies our mission of delivering experiences that enrich and nourish lives. So Lisa, thank you for all that you do for our students. We really appreciate it.
Next, I'd ask Mr. Bricker to come forward. Good evening. I'm going to ask Vince Broughton to come on down.
Vince is recognized for his outstanding work ethic and all-around good nature. He is conscientious about his position as a morning dispatch. He always goes the extra mile to ensure all students get picked up on time. His attitude and upbeat, and he's adaptable to any situation that comes his way. Customer service is always at the forefront of his mind. And I can honestly tell you, I talk to Vince more at 6 o'clock in the morning than anyone else in this school district.[1402.12][1402.12][laughter] I want to thank you for everything you've done. Congratulations.
Thanks.
And last on our recognition list this evening is Jack Schaftman. I don't believe Jack is here this evening, but I just want to say a few things. He's a maintenance mechanic. Jack has been working for the Methacton School District a little over 28 years. No matter what day, time, or conditions, Jack is always willing to do whatever it takes to get the job done. His knowledge that he possesses in various school buildings and systems is unsurpassed. Over the years, Jack has worked for the district and has become very reliable go-to guy who's kind of, who's kind-hearted and friendly nature, is part of what makes him beloved a member of the facilities team at Methacton. So we, we appreciate Jack's efforts as well. With that said, I would ask that the, the recipients of the Award of Excellence be greeted by the members of the board in their excellence for what you've done for our students, our staff, and our community. So please, come forward, and we'll allow you to shake hands. Next on the agenda, we have recognition of retirees. Before I turn the microphone over to Mr. Regina, I want to let the public know that we met with the retirees and their families just prior to the meeting tonight to celebrate and to thank them for all that they've done for our children, our, our staff, and our community here at Methacton. And it's, it's heartwarming to know that, you know, several retirees are here with us this evening. I believe there's 10 in all that are, are retiring, and it's, it's just been a great pleasure working with a number of you, and all of you that, that, that I've come in contact with. In fact, I found out some things today for two of our retirees, that they actually went to grade school together. And if you don't know who that is...[1626.42][1626.42][laughter] And now, and then they've worked for the last how many years in the World Language Department at the high school?
Well, almost.
A few?
Yeah.
A few, okay. And so they, and so it's a tremendous, you know, starting at early childhood and ending their careers, or maybe starting new careers.
It's never yet.
Who knows? Who knows?[1647.14][1647.14][laughter] But it is a tremendous thing to, to recognize these individuals for what they've done for the children today and in years past. So with that, Mr. Regina, please take the microphone.
Each board, May Board Meeting, we have the privilege and honor of presenting our retirees to the board, and it's my pleasure and honor to be able to present them this evening. So without further ado, Eileen Ammon. And Eileen is not here with us this evening, so please give her a round of applause.[1685.74][1685.74][applause] Janet Ariden.
Mary Chantry. Noreen Fusco. Noreen couldn't make it with us this evening, so thank you for the applause. Dennis Grady. Lynn Jansen. Mary Phelps.
Tonight, Dr. Mangano and I are proud to share an update on the Pilot REACH program being implemented at our Cola. Before we begin the presentation, I would like to introduce two people to you, Dr. Brianna Bernardo, who is our clinical coordinator for the REACH program, and Dr. Mara Hanlin, who is one of our mental health clinicians. And they're both from Springfield Psychological, and we were very pleased to have them come here tonight and share in this presentation with you. So to start, I just want to give you a little bit of information about the rationale behind REACH, and I want to use some statistics. We wanted to improve access to services for students because 70% of students with mental health disorders do not receive adequate treatment. We wanted to make sure we had early intervention. Half of all mental health disorders begin before the age of 14, and 3/4 of people with disorders manifest symptoms before the age of 24. Additionally, we know that mental health disorders can also impact academics, attendance, discipline, and the social and emotional well-being, as well as relationships with peers and adults. And lastly, we know that from the research that treatment helps. 81% of teens with anxiety and 71 teens with depression see improvements in symptoms as a result of evidence-based treatments. So just to share a little bit about the REACH program and bring everybody up to date, REACH is an intensive mental health program for students provided at our Cola that provides access to a level of care in the school setting using a proactive and evidence-based approach. Through our agreement with Springfield Psychological, our students receive daily group therapy informed by evidence-based practices. They have individual counseling on a weekly and bi-weekly basis. There is system collaboration with both families, school professionals, outside medical and mental health providers. Our students all have phone access for after-hour support, and there's a 24/7 crisis service, and then family therapy is provided as needed or as requested. Springfield Psychological, in partnership with Mathacton School District, implemented REACH, Raising Expectation and Children's Hope, at our Cola Intermediate School during the 18-19 school year as part of a two-year pilot program. The services they provide include two doctoral-level mental health clinicians, our clinical coordinator, who's here tonight, to supervise the clinical staff, and also provide administrative support. There is onsite support for staff at our Cola Intermediate School, professional development for our district staff, and collaboration with administration throughout the year. And that has been invaluable as we started on this journey.
Thank you. Good evening. Just to add a little bit more to what Dr. Angstad is speaking about regarding interventions. So in addition to providing daily group therapy and individual therapy, our clinicians have been able to provide support to our staff, which really is incredible. It's a bridge. It's a support system. It's a way to allow teachers to do what they're there to do, which is teach. And as we know, and as research has shown, we can't really do all of that until we've really dealt with the whole child, which you've heard about before. So we meet regularly. They have been in team meetings. They are meeting with teachers on the fly, in the hallway, in the faculty room. They're part of the staff. We have embraced them as our staff. They collaborate with students. They collaborate with, if students are working with professionals outside of the school system, they'll provide that support and work with them as well. They remain in very close contact with parents, so parents now feel they have a support network above and beyond that of the teachers or our guidance counselors. We meet weekly. We meet weekly as an administrative team with guidance counselors and the therapists, and we case manage and we talk about kids. So this is an incredible amount of support that we have in some of the interventions, as we can explain here. On this slide, I'm going to just highlight for you the therapy sessions. There are two types of therapy sessions. In addition to the ongoing therapy that's provided as needed, there is a group situation that is in place of health classes, and there's also individual sessions, which this slide shows you, those percentages.
Next, we want to show you some of the feedback we've gotten from students. These are the quotes. I won't read them all to you, but I thought it was interesting. One said they got into less trouble and was pleased to announce that to everybody. But they provided honest feedback to us about the program and what they found it, how they found it to help them throughout the year. In addition, we asked students to take a survey. It was a Likert scale survey. One meant they strongly disagreed with the statement. Five meant they strongly agreed. And I should point out that the N equals 17 is the number of students that participated in the program this year. The REACH program was helpful for me, 4.0. Therapists in the REACH program understood how to support me, 4.1. I felt like the program met my expectation, 4.1. And I would recommend the REACH program to someone I knew who was in need of support, 4.9. I should point out that when you look at the raw data for the 17 students, many students rated the program in the fives. But sometimes you get one or two people that answer differently for different reasons, and so that is the mean score that's reflected there. In addition to looking at just the program itself, we talked about the group therapy specifics data. The topics were relevant, 4.0. I felt like the therapists helped group members feel supported, 4.4. The group room was comfortable and felt like a safe space, 4.9. And I found the group to be a useful part of my support during the day, 4.5. So overall, the students have had very positive feedback and interactions with the staff. They seek them out regularly, and they're not afraid to go there. They like getting the support that they have. Students are also going there during the eighth period, period at the end of the day, and they also will come into the therapy rooms during their lunch period if they need a calmer place to sit and interact with other students.
So on the next few slides, I get all the ones with the numbers. Numbers are not my thing, so I'm going to do my best to talk to them. But anyway, this just gives you the next few slides, an overview of the impact that the teachers were feeling in terms of their students and what was happening. 75% on this one. This teacher and counselor feedback REACH was available to me if I had questions pertaining to my students. Again, 64.7 in the often category. I have spoken to REACH counselors about a student, and this varies, I think, depending upon the situation. REACH has been helpful to me with regards to helping my students.
Next, we wanted to just provide you with some information on the program goals and data. When we started this program back in November of 2018, we identified these goals, just the bulleted areas: decreased symptoms related to emotional difficulties, increased attendance, increase or maintain grades, reduce disciplinary infractions, and reduce the need for alternative placements by supporting students in their home schools. When you look at the first measure, these are actual instruments that are used for assessment, and you can see that the students, the number of students who experienced a decrease, using that first example. And then the other instrument they use is the Depression Scale for children, and four students demonstrated improvements in their symptoms. When we look at attendance, eight students increased their days of attendance compared to last year. Five students decreased the number of days they were tardy from last year to this year. And three students receiving REACH support decreased their overall absences and the number of days they were late or had early dismissals. And then in terms of grades, 15 students increased their grades in at least one subject. Eight students increased their grades in two or more subjects, and two students maintained their current grades. We'll be looking at this data again at the end of the fourth marking period, so we can continue to track that. I'll turn it over to you.
The discipline aspect. So here, we're going to talk a little bit about reduced disciplinary referrals and suspensions. And really, the ultimate goal for us, besides providing support to our staff to better help students, was to really keep kids where they need to be, which is in classrooms. So on here, we're talking a little bit about how students have asked for that option to speak with REACH counselors. They've asked for being able to meet with REACH counselors prior to meeting with their own guidance counselor and/or myself or Mr. Thompson. We will often go to REACH as well to say, before we get involved, before we go down a road of discipline, what can we do? How can we resolve this differently? And I think the main points for me is to really talk a little bit about how we can continue on this path and really look to bridge that gap and repair and restore for And a lot of them, as the last bullet point mentioned, a lot of the, there was a decrease in the severity of the cases that we saw. The other goal we really wanted to talk a little bit about was being able to keep kids. This is very personal to me in terms of going from one year where we did have nine students that were referred to an alternative placement and having none this year. That, to me, is tremendous and is a very, an honest and genuine reflection of the support that has been provided to our Cola, to our staff, and really being able to hang on to kids. I'm very proud of that, and I think the kids are as well. So this is pretty incredible.
Moving forward, we're talking about some next steps, just a few that I want to speak about tonight. We want to continue to develop and evaluate the effectiveness of the REACH pilot program at our Cola for the 19-20 school year. I've talked to Tara Ricky in terms of making sure there's many opportunities for Springfield Psychological to conduct mental health trainings, related trainings for district staff throughout the 19-20 school year. And then we're working with Springfield Psychological to analyze and discuss the possible expansion of the REACH program at Skyview Upper Elementary School, so this information is readily available prior to developing the budget for the 2021 school year. So that's the direction we're headed. You may be asking, why Skyview Upper Elementary? And we just feel that being able to provide that early intervention support as early as possible has made a tremendous difference, and we would like to continue to see that expand. And now I'm going to turn it back over to Amy, because she's going to share some feedback from parents, as well as her own perspective as a building principal.
Thank you. So one of the steps to the program is making sure that we make the connection with parents, to the therapists, to our team. And I've had the opportunity to be involved in that transition, as well as speak directly to parents and really ask them, like, tell me what you're thinking and tell me how this went for you. So I just want to mention a few quotes that I was permitted to share without names, things such as, "These people are truly amazing. This has made a difference in my life and my child's life. I have peace of mind. We finally are able to see both sides, the academic and the human side. I feel safe that my child feels safe. This place is their safe haven. They call it my place, my space. It has reduced anxiety, not only at school but at home. Much less trouble." There's so much pressure at this time and age in a child's life that this is the best place to actually begin, and this one parent had actually mentioned, "The sooner the better" because we realize what turmoil this time of their lives it can be. It allows all of us to be able to do our jobs, including at home and at school. They realized in the beginning, and remember, we didn't start till November, that it was bumpy and we were all trying to work together, so parents realized that. But once things settled down, it was helpful with peers. It kept things quiet. It allowed my child to stay in school. It allowed my child's attendance to improve. It allowed for connection to outside therapists. It has helped incredibly." So those were just some of the direct quotes and feedback that we got, which is amazing. One parent actually said, "I want my child to write a letter. I want, you know, his or her voice to be heard," which is phenomenal. And I have to share, I walked in today just to actually touch base with a couple of the docs, and the kids looked at me like, "What are you doing here? Like, why are you in our room? Like, get out." This is private. They didn't say that. It's the look on their face, and I was like, "Not here for any of you. I'm here to talk to them, but I will leave." Like, it's very personal to them, and that's a pretty incredible feeling to be able to create that in a building that's very busy, as you all see and have seen. Am I on the last one? All right. Okay. So the last slide, actually, I'm very proud of as well. We did get some assistance from Craig Correio in our building with video, because I don't do this part either, but I was able to go around and actually capture feedback of staff, live feedback. And since they all can't be here tonight, we do have them live, so I did get their permission to show this. But I thought it would be interesting...
Psychological to conduct mental health trainings, related trainings for district staff throughout the 1920 school year. And then we're working with Springfield Psychological to analyze and discuss the possible expansion of the REACH program at Skyview Upper Elementary School. So this information is readily available prior to developing the budget for the 2021 school year. So that's the direction we're headed. You may be asking, why Skyview Upper Elementary? And we just feel that being able to provide that early intervention support as early as possible has made a tremendous difference, and we would like to continue to see that expand. And now I'm going to turn it back over to Amy, because she's going to share some feedback from parents, as well as her own perspective as a building principal.
So one of the steps to the program is making sure that we make the connection with parents, to the therapists, to our team. And I've had the opportunity to be involved in that transition, as well as speak directly to parents and really ask them, like, tell me what you're thinking and tell me how this went for you. So I just want to mention a few quotes that I was permitted to share without names. Things such as, "These people are truly amazing." "This has made a difference in my life and my child's life." "I have peace of mind." "We finally are able to see both sides, the academic and the human side." "I feel safe that my child feels safe." "This place is their safe haven." "They call it my place, my space." "It has reduced anxiety, not only at school but at home, much less trouble." There's so much pressure at this time and age in a child's life that this is the best place to actually begin, and this one parent had actually mentioned, "The sooner the better," because we realize what turmoil this time of their lives it can be. It allows all of us to be able to do our jobs, including at home and at school. They realized in the beginning, and remember, we didn't start till November, that it was bumpy and we were all trying to work together. So parents realized that. But once things settled down, it was, it was helpful with peers. It kept things quiet. It allowed my child to stay in school. It allowed my child's attendance to improve. It allowed for connection to outside therapists. It has helped incredibly. So those were just some of the direct quotes and feedback that we got, which is amazing. One parent actually said, "I want my child to write a letter. I want, you know, his or her voice to be heard," which is phenomenal. And I have to share, I walked in today just to actually touch base with a couple of the docs, and the kids looked at me like, "What are you doing here? Like, why are you in our room? Like, get out." This is private. They didn't say that, just the look on their face. And I was like, "Not here for any of you. I'm here to talk to them, but I will leave." Like, it's very personal to them, and that's a pretty incredible feeling to be able to create that in a building that's very busy, as you all see, kind of have seen. Am I on the last one? All right. Okay. So the last slide, actually, I'm very proud of as well. We did get some assistance from Craig Correio in our building with video, because I don't do this part either. But I was able to go around and actually capture feedback of staff, live feedback. And since they all can't be here tonight, we do have them live. So I did get their permission to show this. But I thought it would be interesting to see some of what our own staff is saying, because I think here, like, I can get up here and talk about it, but I live it every day, and I welcome anybody to come and see it and feel it, because it is a feeling in the building. And I think not only for the kids, I have to say, that take part in the program, but the rest of the building as well. Because everybody knows, there's like a sense of just calmness and relief, that there's, there's support, there's a place for everyone. So we'll let this play. I think it goes right in.
Hi, my name is Kayla Hendricks. I work as the mental health specialist here at our COLA. Since I have started this position, REACH has been implemented here, and honestly, it's been a really great program. It's offered another layer of collaboration for me professionally, as well as support for our students. So we share a lot of the same students. We're able to offer them support in different ways, and I see their impact as being spread wide throughout the school. And it's also a great way to come together as a team, to collaborate with the administration here and other teachers, and spread awareness for mental health, and just being aware of how we can best support our students. So I see it as a great program, and I love the ladies, and yeah.
Hi, I'm Jerry Thompson, Assistant Principal here at our COLA. And the REACH program that has come into our building this year has been incredible. The REACH counselors are incredible people, knowledgeable people, really skilled. They collaborate, they work well with our students, but also our staff. They've been really helpful and supportive to our staff. So we're thrilled to have them here, looking forward to continuing to work with them and build the relationships that we're pretty impressed in such a short period of time have already been built. Thank you.
I am one of the school nurses here at our COLA. Having the REACH program here has been great for our practice and our ability to help kids with medical needs. They've taken over a lot of the mental health issues that have come up, and it's been a great resource for us in helping the kids achieve issues with their mental health that we otherwise might not have time with other medical issues at the school. So we're grateful, we're certainly grateful, Joni and I, for having them here.
Hi, I'm Tara Cantello.
And I'm Janie Kelly.
And I find the REACH program to be invaluable in supporting students in my classroom who are struggling with their academics because of mental health.
And I teach a lot of students who require multiple levels of support, and the REACH program has been invaluable in terms of another safety net for these students in addressing their unique emotional, social needs, and we could use more of it.
Hi, my name's Amanda Chud. I am an emotional support teacher at our COLA. I wanted to take a minute to talk about REACH. I think it has been beneficial to the school as it's more of an in-home place for both students, teachers, and parents to be able to collaborate. I like that it takes away the health aspect of their coursework and brings it into the mental health aspect of their world. And the doctors down there and their expertise are very willing to work with the school staff.
Hi, I'm Stephanie Baradelli. I am seventh grade school counselor here at our COLA Intermediate School. The REACH program has been an addition to our services in that they are able to reach kiddos that are in more need of their services than what we can offer to them on a daily basis.
Dawn Noel, seventh grade special education teacher. And REACH for us this year really has been an invaluable resource for us. It's really helped with academic support, socialization support for our kids, and actually helping meet some of the physical needs of our students who come in without those needs being met. And if those needs aren't met on a daily basis, everything else is secondary. So REACH has really been a support for all of us this year.
Hi, I'm Danielle Felsen. I'm the supervisor, special ed here at our COLA. And I just want to say that REACH has been a valuable asset and addition this year. They support and they understand our students. They have been a great resource for our staff, and I look forward to continuing to work with them. Thank you.
So that ends our presentation tonight, and thank you for allowing us to present to you.
Thank you.
We'll ask the members of the board to take their seat and ask Dr. Anstett and Dr. Magano, if there's any questions from the board.
Sure. Thank you. Excellent. I should have tissues to go in.
Thank you, Dr. Magano. Members of the board, are there any questions? I'll start on my right, Mr. Winters.
I'm just gonna, I'm sure you're gonna get nine of these, but or eight. Thank you very much for meeting all the goals. It's really impressive how much has been done in nine months. Fantastic, meeting those goals and actually probably exceeding probably our expectations of how successful this would be. There's a couple of things in your slide I just wanted to highlight. There was a one slide that said, one of the graphical slides, that said, "Zero percent of the teachers have never spoken to the counselors about a student," which is unbelievable. It's fantastic that all the students and all the counselors are interacting and making sure that that interaction is happening, and it's something to be very proud of also. And I think a key aspect of it, too, that, two last points, is the continuing education of not being, I think, when we've talked about this in the Education Committee, the unfortunate need to place out nine students last year, the effect it has on their continuing education, to keep them in their setting and keeping their education going as long as they're getting the mental health support that they need is fantastic, and especially here, that they can continue to do it at Math Acton. And I think the last point is that I'm very pleased about how the professional development aspects are being used, and we thank Springfield and the counselors for providing that, and hopefully, the only thing I would say is hopefully we can leverage that more next year across the school district, because certainly can hear the need coming from the other schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Winters. Anyone else on my right? Mr. Ryan?
Thank you very much for the presentation. Paul said a lot of what I did was going to say as well. The only thing that I would add is the other number that jumped out at me was the 4.9% who said that they would recommend it to another student who they felt was in a similar situation. So you can tell that it is making a profound effect on those students, and that acknowledgement that it's helping them, and if it's helping them, it can help others. So thank you so much for what you're doing.
Mr. Ryan, anyone else?
Thank you so much. This seems like such a beneficial program. I did want to ask, because this is only at our COLA right now, as our year winds down, it looked like a large percentage was using the high use, the five to seven, or the, I forget the numbers that were used. But as we move toward the end of the year, do we have a, like, transition plan for these students moving forward?
Yes. So what we've currently arranged is for Springfield Psychological to work with our central mental health specialist over the summer to help transition students that are moving up to the high school next year, to help ease that transition. And they've been working with the eighth grade students, knowing that they're making that transition. In addition, just really enforcing that the support is there if they need that over the summer. And then they'll be back next year, start up and start in September, so, in August. So it will be nice to start at the beginning of the year.
Any other questions on my right? If not, my left?
Thank you so much. In the nearly four years that I have been on the board, I think this may be the greatest thing that I've seen come to fruition. And I'm sorry that Mrs. Reese wasn't here to see it as well, because I know this is something that was, was very important to her. So thank you very much for all of your hard work on this. The numbers that stood out to me, the increased attendance, I mean, if the kids aren't showing up, we can't help them. So getting them in the door is part of the struggle, I know. And so that, that combined with the fact that nearly all of them increased their grades tells me that this is doing exactly what we want it to do. One question that I have, and I kind of touched on it with Ms. Hull's question, these students are accustomed to getting support Monday through Friday on a regular basis. Do they have access to support over the summer? I know that, you know, we're working closely with their families, but I just want to make sure that we have plans in place to help them through.
Do you want to speak a little bit? Do you want to?
Hello, everyone. Just to remind you, my name is Dr. Brianna Bernardo, and I'm the clinical coordinator for the REACH program. So oftentimes, like, students are utilizing the program so much throughout the school year. It's a lot of school stress that's coming up. It's kind of balancing, like, whatever might be going on at home, as well as what's happening at school. So we found, like, in doing this program at other school districts, that oftentimes over the summer, a lot of that day-to-day stress reduces, you know, so there isn't kind of that high utilization need as much. If there are specific students that we identify, you know, that we do feel might need ongoing support, we then work with the family, are there, what are some appropriate referrals? You know, is there any kind of an outpatient level of need, you know, where we can refer to, like, a Springfield office or refer to some other kind of service? You know, we have also at other districts in the past, worked with the family, you know, does the, are there insurance options? Are there paying out-of-pocket options? You know, what can the family do, you know, if we do feel like there's a higher level of need for a particular student? You know, we do have our crisis phone where we let the students know, you know, throughout the school year, that's a service that they can utilize, you know, in certain situations. You know, we certainly, like, check it over the summer. Something that we necessarily make available to the same level, but it is something that, you know, should something come up, like, that's something that I, as the clinical coordinator, can hold on to throughout the summer, to have that option be available to students as well.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Ms. Drummond?
Hi. Thank you for this. When this came in front of the Education Committee, it was a very exciting prospect, and I'm really glad to see how it's come out. And I love that I kept hearing and seeing the word "collaboration" all through the presentation that, you know, especially with, with the students, collaborating with the staff and with the families, so that they can continue ideas, you know, back at home. So, you know, this is covered in so many ways. I had a question, two questions. One is about the N equals seventeen number, because I know when we were talking about this in committee, there was discussion of, you know, an idea of that, you know, there's a 20 students served, but it could be actually more than that served throughout the year, because some might see their issues resolved, some might not. So I just was wondering if it was more than that, or seventeen was the number of students that were served through the year, and then to...
I believe we had eighteen at one point.
We're at twenty.
Yeah, we're at twenty now.
We're twenty now.
It ebbs and flows. And I think that, if you will, if I may, when we did, when we started collecting the data, it may have been at seventeen, and there are days when I will go down and be like, "Oh, and by the way, there's a few more." So I think that's where we feel very lucky, in that they're there to really help us and guide us. So if we are in a crisis situation and we need something, I know I have go-to people. So to be at twenty and to keep, you know, there, especially this time of year, and they know, it's been, it's just a busy time. So it's been, we keep growing, and they're very flexible with us, so we're grateful.
There is a sense of students kind of in and out.
Absolutely.
And then my second question is, is there a, I'm sure there's a process, but could you tell me about the processes in place to identify the upcoming sixth graders who might be eligible for the program?
So that's already been determined, and meetings have already been held to talk about the students that are currently sixth grade transitioning to our COLA. So they've already had several team meetings to talk about their needs, parent referrals, information packets, all that stuff are already in process, so that we can start fresh at the beginning of the year.
Thank you.
Sure.
Anyone else to my left?
I'm on the wrong side. Thank you. Thank you. The comments, the feedback that we've gotten from everybody has been insanely positive. So it's thrilling to hear that we're making a difference for so many students, for our staff, for their families, for the other teachers in the building. The fact, Amy, that you're saying that the entire building environment has changed as a result of this is really striking. All of my questions have really been asked. Have there been any, has there been any criticism or any negative feedback, like, hey, this is something we need to improve upon as we move into next year's program?
I would say that the, not a criticism, but I think we're always looking for, I am especially, so it's a, it's a feedback time of year, while I bring staff in to ask those very questions, what can we do to improve? And the one thing is, our health, our health and phys ed teacher, that department, is phenomenal, and they need to work closely, because that's where one of the pullouts occurs is in health. But they really just want to be part of the process, and I think one of the things we're working to continue is communication, making sure we know where everybody is at a certain point in time, and making sure that people are getting that feedback of the kids that are working with REACH folks. So are we always looking to improve that? Absolutely. But to be able to get that feedback from staff, to say, "Look, we're in it, we want it, we want to help, and we want to be part of the solution," is incredible, and we're always looking for how we can do it better. So we wouldn't be in this business if we didn't want to, so.
I think the other outcome that we saw this year, too, is just the relationship with our central providers. So we have our mental health specialist. They're constantly collaborating. So kids can ebb and flow between a Level III support and a Tier II support, and they're working in tandem with each other. So that's also been very instrumental. We appreciate the opportunity to be here.
Thank you. Thank you very much. As a building leader, I can't thank the support enough from central administration, from superintendent to school board. It's tremendous. Thank you, on behalf of our COLA.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. President, that ends the guests and scheduled speakers for this evening. I'll turn the agenda over to you.
Kind of wish that we could just end the meeting right there, because there's just been so much positivity this evening. But alas, we do have business to get to. So we'll move on to our reports and the Finance Committee. Mr. Earnshaw.
Sounds like you don't want to hear my report. Finance Committee met on May the 8th, and the minutes from that meeting are attached to the agenda for this one, so I'll give an overview. Meeting called to order at 6:31. All committee members were in attendance. Mr. Bricker, as we usually do, reviewed the monthly financial reports, including the list of bills, Treasury's report, the expenditure and revenue report for the month of April. There are no budgetary transfers this month, and we also reviewed the healthcare report. Discussion topics included the summer 2019 master plan financing recommendation, the use of the 2017-18 committed master plan funds, the forecast for the current fiscal year, the proposed final budget, which we reviewed last week, the general liability and property insurance carriers for the coming fiscal year, the Aramark contract, an additional student activity account, and there was also discussion regarding the athletics budget. During Courtesy of the Floor, we heard from four members of the public on a variety of topics, and the meeting adjourned at 8:35 PM. Thank you.
Sorry about that. Property and Transportation Committee, Mr. Neverett.
The Property and Transportation Committee met on May the 13th. All committee members were present, including Dr. Zerby, Mr. Bricker, and Mr. Fretz. From Fidavia, we have Mr. Sicala and Mr. Miller with us. Under the property part of the meeting, the 2018 master plan is close to being closed out. The committee received updated financial summary, an updated punch list for the our COLA auditorium, the remainder of which will be completed once school is completed for the year. Also received notice that the high school MEP project was closed out, and that the one remaining performance issue with one of the pool HVAC compressors is being addressed as a warranty issue with the manufacturer. Regarding projects for the 2019 master plan work, the committee held extensive discussions about a number of projects, a result of which some of them are up for approval tonight. Those included final scope for additional concrete pads and metal canopies at the high school to address water infiltration issues, options for additional storage at the high school needed in part to replace the current post-prom closet and now defunct second-floor bathroom. The next steps required in the remediation of Eagleville's facade and window issues, with the goal of bidding a project in the fall for completion in the summer of 2020. We talked about the remaining high school roof replacements, and then additional design work that would be needed to repair, excuse me, prepare for the final phases of the high school MEP work, which would upgrade the HVAC systems throughout the remainder of the building for improved temperature and humidity control. The goal there being that we may be able to complete all of the major master plan high school work by the end of next summer. So fingers crossed there. More details are available in the written minutes for the agenda. Under transportation, the committee discussed the Addendum to First Students contract that's up for vote tonight. I'll defer to Mr. Bricker to discuss the details later. And then under Courtesy of the Floor, we heard from John Andrews regarding meeting schedules. Arrowhead Building Design enrollment in full-day kindergarten. Heard from Jim Mollick regarding classrooms and capacities, full-day kindergarten, and KCBA, the architects for the Arrowhead Forward Project, and Joe Bickelman regarding our COLA's enrollment and full-day kindergarten. The meeting adjourned at 8:45.
Thank you, Mr. Neverett. For the Education Committee, I know Ms. Reese was going to speak to someone, Ms. Kankro?
Okay. So the meeting called to order at 6:30 PM on 5/6. All were in attendance with Dr. Cottone, Dr. Anstett, Ms. Ricky, and Dr. Zerby.
All were in attendance with Dr. Katona, Dr. Angstad, Ms. Ricky, and Dr. Zerby. The first discussion was about the 2018-2019 professional development concerning in-service days, the pull-out trainings, off-site training, administrative training, um, and then they will also review the results of the new, the new needs assessment and Bright Byte survey for 2019-2020 planning. The next one we discussed was the Reach program, which we discussed tonight, which I believe encompasses the whole child completely. Uh, the next one was approval for federal funds to accept Title I, II, III, and IV funds. The following was the AP registration changes. We reviewed that and then tonight we're going to be voting on the AP Biology textbook update. Basically, I'll review that, the new teacher's resource. The changes were basically, um, moved from spring, March to fall, October. The fee is the same from 97 or 145. New exam can be ordered late through January for 40 additional dollars and there is a cancellation fee increase from 18 to $42. Um, grades, and then we discussed grade seven to 12 school counseling review. Uh, we've reviewed the gifted review process and Dr. Zerby, I don't know if you wanted to review that one?
I, I can. In fact, uh, this evening, uh, I was going to share that there were two additional strategic objectives, so if it's okay, I'll wait till my report to go both, over both of those, which include what you're suggesting.
Great. And then we reviewed the students enrollment and then we had several people from courtesy of the floor, which you can look up at the minutes, and the meeting was adjourned at 8:04 PM.
Thank you, Ms. Kankrow. Policy Committee, Ms. Hall?
The Policy Committee met on Wednesday, May 1st in the Farina Boardroom. The meeting was called to order at 6:30 with all committee members, uh, the board in attendance as well as Dr. Zerby and Mrs. Montain. Policies recommended for first reading tonight are policy 121 field trips, policy 351 drug and substance abuse, policy 124 summer school, policy 125 community education, and policy 249 bullying, cyberbullying. During old and new business, Mr. Winters inquired about policy 114 gifted education following discussions from the April board meeting and there was no input during courtesy of the floor. The meeting adjourned at 8:01 PM.
Thank you, Ms. Hall. And the intermediate unit, Mr. Ryan?
A very short report for a very short meeting. Uh, I think it was probably the shortest meeting I've ever attended. Um, the hope was that they would have the bids in for the MCIU building at 1605 Main Street, their early learning academy. Um, unfortunately, when they received the bids, uh, the recommendation is to reject all bids. Uh, the plan is to go back, tighten up their RFP process. Um, they were very aggressive in their original RFP, so they went back out and, uh, I believe they're meeting this evening. Unfortunately, I'm missing that meeting for this meeting, uh, so I will report back next month. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ryan. Uh, North Monco Technical Career Center, Ms. Drummond? Yes, we met on, um, when did we meet? We met this month and, um, and I just want to share that nine Methacton students took part in 12 different skills competitions this school year and that Methacton earned four first-place wins in those contests. Uh, the school recently held a senior project expo and estimated that 900 people came through the school to see the students and their projects. And currently, school administration is working on their comprehensive plan to be delivered to PDE this fall. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Drummond. Um, our student board representatives are not here this evening. Uh, for the Education Foundation, we have Ms. Kralovich.
I have more props with me tonight. Um, thank you very much for allowing me to report tonight. Um, tonight, the Methacton Education Foundation wants to tell you a little bit about the very successful campaign we just wrapped up for Share the Love. This was a campaign that provided families with an opportunity to recognize their favorite teachers and staff members. Methacton supporters ordered over 400 Share the Love certificates. We were flooded with orders and the employees expressed that they were overwhelmed by the flood of gratitude as well. We truly did share the love. We would like to thank Mr. Michaels and his life skills class for their help in completing and distributing these certificates on behalf of the foundation and families who donated. As the foundation grows and competition increases for the funds we have available, we're finding ourselves looking for more effective and efficient ways to evaluate grants and applications. We're in the process of rolling out granting cycles that will help us achieve those goals. We will be offering two granting cycles, one for the fall and one for the spring that will align with our revenue cycles. We will communicate, be communicating these dates out to all of the Methacton employees and administration shortly. The Apex Awards will be the first annual Methacton Apex Awards. If you've heard, as you've heard in past meetings, we will be held, held, oh my goodness, I'm tongue-tied tonight. We'll be holding them in October when we will recognize outstanding alumni, educators, and community members along with businesses who make us proud to be Methacton. We have extended the nomination period to May 31st. Since we've only been able to communicate with about 1% of Methacton alumni, we appreciate any assistance that anybody in the audience or at the table tonight can help, um, in spreading the word about getting nominations in for these awards. You can visit our website, methactonfoundation.org/apex to make a nomination. With graduation coming up, the foundation is running two last campaigns of the years. We have these beautiful personalized graduation signs congratulating our class of 2019 graduates. We also are selling flowers on the website thanks to another Methacton family and Plaza Florist who are basically allowing us to have families put pre-orders in and then they will be able to pick them up right at the graduation ceremony. We also would like to thank all of our donors, volunteers, and Methacton employees who have helped to make this year and all the grant awards this year possible. We'd like to thank the administration for working with us and all of the faculty who've helped to develop innovative programs that the foundation can fund. We could not do this without you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Kralovich. I, I think I've mentioned this before, but I feel like you've reinvented the Methacton Education Foundation since you've joined, so we really appreciate the hard work that you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you.
For communications, Ms. Kelly.
There are a few items I would like to share from the Communications Department. Graduation for the class of 2019 is scheduled for June 13th at 4:00 PM at the high school stadium. Dates and times for mandatory commencement rehearsals and other important commencement details can be found on the Methacton High School website. Next up, there's more exciting news coming out of the high school. Did you know several Methacton students and staff have had their creative writing or art published? Since 2014, they've submitted their work for inclusion in the high school's Creative Arts Magazine, Element. Volume five is now available for purchase. You can find the link on the district's website under Featured News. The literary magazine retails for $15 and supports the Methacton Creative Arts Publishing Club. And finally, uh, since I came to the district in January, I've had the privilege of seeing a lot of the amazing work, uh, going on inside of our schools. Uh, my office is grateful to have the opportunity to produce the district's video series showcasing the pride of Methacton. Each month, we highlight a subject so our school community and the general public can get a glimpse of some of the wonderful things that make Methacton not only the district of choice, uh, but a wonderful place to learn and grow. In February, we featured the art program. In March, we took a ride with Driver's Ed. In April, we took a look at the science program and for May, our final feature of the school year is Methacton's music program. So take a moment to check it out at www.methacton.org/showcase. It's sure to make you proud to be part of the school community. And as a reminder, all of the programs featured in the series lives on our website. We'll work over the summer to determine the next subjects to explore and plan to resume the series in the fall. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kelly. I can't wait to see what features we have coming ahead. Superintendent's report, Dr. Zerby?
Thank you very much. Uh, this evening, I have a number of items, so please bear with me as I, I go through them. Uh, so given the fact that this is the last board of school directors meeting prior to graduation, I just want to kind of pre-congratulate all the seniors and their families for reaching this very special moment. I'm looking forward to the beautiful sunny June 13th, 4:00 PM. Why is everyone laughing?
Not too sunny.
Okay. Well, much, much more sun than rain, that's all I got to say. And I hope to see everyone that can join us for that very special day. Secondly, also given that this is the same, the same meeting as the last for the, the school year, I want to thank the Board of School Directors for their commitment to the great work of this district. Each of these members give their time and talents to provide direction and support. I just want to say thank you. I want to say thank you to our, to all of our staff for their kindness, for their teachings and all the learning that takes place and their dedication and support of our district students. Our teachers, support staff, and administrators are outstanding. I want to also thank our volunteers, our home and school members, and our Education Foundation, uh, for their enduring support of our mission. Uh, their support validates our mission, uh, and that rings clear in our tagline, "Learn, Lead, Succeed Together." Lastly, I want to thank, uh, the community for their support of our school system and their commitment to excellence. And the Thacton School District is truly a community of learners, so thank you. Uh, next, I'd like to, uh, follow up on the comment that Ms. Kankrow had mentioned about in her report. I want to make sure that everyone is, uh, clear that I've updated the strategic plan, uh, specifically focused area one and added two strategic objectives, and I'll briefly review them, uh, but they are on the website now for, uh, for your individual review. Basic strategic objective under focus area one reads, "Ensure that gifted education services K through 12 are accessible and are provided in a manner consistent with the best practices and the needs of students by the end of the fourth quarter 2019." Uh, with that, uh, the strategies, we will be seeking feedback on the current services at all levels, uh, and that feedback will be based on student feedback, teacher feedback, and parent feedback. Uh, we'll be looking at, uh, the best practices for gifted education. Uh, we will be producing a gifted services draft recommendations. We'll be sharing those with the Education Foundation. Um, we will then, uh, determine, uh, from the, the feedback from the Education Foundation if those, uh, recommendations, uh, as, as outlined, uh, would, would be, uh, considered for approval by the board and we would move forward on, on any of those decisions. The second, uh, and the two people responsible for leading that process will be Dr. Angstad and myself. Uh, the next objective will be objective 11 and it says, "Complete a program review of seventh, grade seven through 12 school counseling program to ensure that the programs and services planned are consistent with student need and are provided in an effective and efficient manner by the end of the first quarter 2020." Those strategies include engaging the pupil services director's organization, uh, in Pennsylvania to help provide that program review, uh, conducting that review, sharing that review with the, with the, uh, counselors in grade seven through 12, then bringing any recommendations forward to the Education Committee for, for consideration and then to the board if there are any items for the board to adopt. Again, the two individuals responsible for bringing that forward would be, uh, Director of Pupil Services and myself. Uh, the next item that I have to share with, with the public and the board is, as many of you are aware, we are in the process of seeking, uh, two elementary principals, uh, one for Eagleville Elementary and one for Warsester for the start of the, of next school year. Uh, just a little tidbit, uh, we received over 70 applications for the two positions and have narrowed the pool down to 12 with two more rounds of, of the process, uh, ahead of us. Um, people involved, uh, please know the people involved include, uh, is led by, uh, Mr. Regina, our Director of HR. Uh, the applicant pool is very strong and we are highly encouraged. Uh, we have, uh, administrators, teachers, school board members, and community members involved in that process. Lastly, and, uh, and certainly of, of great importance, uh, I just want to ask that, uh, as we approach the Memorial Day weekend, I ask everyone to just take a few minutes, uh, this weekend to reflect on the lives of that, that were sacrificed so that we can provide, uh, these opportunities, uh, in the Methacton School District and grow as a community of learners. So thank you very much. That ends my report.
Thank you, Dr. Zerby. At this time, we'll take public comment on board action items. Dr. Malick?
Page three, I-1. What is the dollar amount that you're authorizing the funding of 2019 portion of the master plan?
Mr. Bricker, do you have that information?
It's not to exceed $6.8 million.
Okay. Um, I have a question about the minutes. You have here in the minutes, who, um, authorized the change to the format in the minutes? Do you know?
We can get to that when we get to the minutes of the meeting.
Well, you changed the format for the courtesy of the floor of the public, right? Now it says, I'll, I'll use me as the example. Jim Malik provided his opinion on the following. But that's not the way it used to be, right? Because before, and I'll just use November of 2018, he used to give extensive explanations of all my comments. Looks like he changed the format in January of this year. So who made that decision? Number one. Number two, why was it made? Because in November, Jim Malik commented or asked questions regarding mortgage payments, Warsester township capital account over taxation, comments about Mr. Nevarret that he made at a special meeting about not supporting closure and realignment and can't support any scenario that leaves three elementary schools. Why was the format changed? Can you tell me? Can you tell me who made this, the decision? Because this is the official record. So you seem to be kind of excluding the public. Like I heard it to comment tonight about like, go look up what the public said. So you're like, kind of like vanishing the public.
Dr. Malik, are you saying that the opinion that you expressed at the board meeting is inaccurately reflected in the minutes?
There is no opinion reflected.
Okay.
The only, only way anybody's going to know what opinion I gave is to look at the video, but the video is not part of the record. So let's just say, for instance, I'll, I'll give you a hypothetical. Let's just say somebody files a complaint with an agency, okay? The agency comes in to do an investigation and they look at these minutes, but they can't tell, let's just say about the Our Head Project. They can't tell that we came to a meeting in January and expressed our concerns about how you guys are managing the whole deal. Because there's no comments and the video is not really a part of the official record. You see what I mean? See where I'm going with it? But if you want to create yourself more work, my advice to my two friends over here is now we'll start sending you, after all these meetings, stuff you can look at. I'll start complaining to you in emails to the board and to Dr. Zerby. We'll play that game if you want. Do you want to do that? I'll just start sending you emails every day. That's how I'll create the record. So you, if you can answer those questions, I'd appreciate it.
Thank you. Anyone else with public comment on board action items? Mr. Andrews?
John Andrews, Law, Providence. Under the fiscal items on the agenda is item J, Food Services Management Agreement, one year... Year Extension. The, the attachment on the website fails to deal with Aramark. So, I think that the, the correct attachment needs to be provided. And related to that, I have the observation that maybe I should have noticed earlier that someone who, who has this, gets this yellow agenda at the meeting, or perhaps they go to the Farina to get a copy of it ahead of the meeting, there's no mention whatsoever that a number of items have attachments. And I think that would be something very, very easy to, to fix, and it would be a worthwhile fix. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Andrews.
Joe Bickelman from Audubon. What is it? Item H, the Transportation Contract Amendment. When I printed that out, I only got the first two pages of the contract amendment. There were no rates there. And then I went down to the Food Service Management Agreement, and underneath that was an attachment for First Student. And it showed the two pages that were up in Item H, and it also showed an additional six pages that include the rates for the next six years. So, it was improperly posted as an attachment under Item J. And it showed all the rates. So, I want to thank you for including the rates for the contract. I'd like to agree with Dr. Malik about the minutes. You can't tell, and I've said this before, you can't tell anybody's opinion one way or the other when you read the minutes, anybody from the public. And now, they're really shortened to where Dr. Malik just expressed an opinion, and you don't know what he said. You don't know if he disagrees with the, the birth rates, the capacity issues. You don't know anything about that. I think the Board Secretary probably needs to be here so that they can control the time clock, because it's a bad look for you, Ms. President, to control the time clock. The Secretary should be here doing that, and they should be taking down all the notes that, that go on here. I don't know if Shay's doing that as, as we go along, but he types a lot when I'm up here, so I don't know if he shares that. But you need to know the opinions of these people in the public. You know, whether or not I agree with sixth grade going to Arcola because there's 800 spaces there than there was 1,200, 12 years ago. You know, you can't, you can't decipher anything from the minutes on how I feel about anything. And now, it's even worse. It's just that we talk to topics or expressed an opinion, so it's, it's not available for somebody to read in the bound minutes as the years go by. So, I will say that.
Thank you, Mr. Bickelman. Is anyone else with public comment on Board action items? With that, we'll move on to the rest of the agenda. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes from the Work Session Meeting held on April 16th, 2019, and the regular Board Meeting held on April 23rd, 2019, as listed? Mr. Winters, in a second. Ms. Drummond, any comments from the Board?
In light of the comments from the public regarding the minutes, I will say that it's not something that I had been tracking that closely, and it's something that, you know, we certainly can take a look at and see whether or not we're meeting our legal obligation to, to keep the minutes at the meeting. Any other comments from the Board? Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion carries eight-zero.
The list of bills, I'm sorry, for the fiscal items. Mr. Booker.
Thank you, Madam President. Tonight, for your approval, we have the list of bills, the Treasury Report, there are no budgetary transfers, the renewal of the Owners' Representative Agreement with Fedavia, the use of committed master plan funds, insurance carrier and premium recommendation approvals for 2019 to '20 school year, the MCIU District Cost Plan, Transportation Contract Amendment with First Student, Resolution 1905 Master Plan, Food Service Management Agreement, One Year Extension with Aramark, the creation of a student activity account, and Master Plan Summer 2019 projects.
Thank you, Mr. Booker. Can I have a motion to approve items, let's say A, B, and C, under fiscal items? Mr. Winters, in a second. Mr. Earnshaw, any comments from the Board on those three? Ms. Hall.
I'm sorry, I should have asked this last week, probably, about the list of bills. I see that there's a good amount of field trip expenses included in there, and I was curious what process we use when we acquire or charter buses for, to make sure that we're having cost savings. I don't know how, what, what the process is for finding the buses for those trips, and what the requirements are for when we need those buses.
So, the process would be to request First Student to run a trip through our program and contract that we have with them. If the trip is greater than three hours in length, they are, well, they are able to go out and request a outside vendor to provide that transportation.
Okay, so. So, First Student is the one that is acquiring the outside transportation services for us?
They can, but sometimes the teachers have done it on their own.
Oh.
Any other comments or questions from the Board on those three items?
I think we've got something to discuss on property next month.
Fair point. Anyone else? Okay, all those in favor? Motion carries eight-zero. Why don't we do this? Is there anything in Items D through L that Board members would like to take separately? Mr. Earnshaw?
Item E.
E? Anything else? Okay, so.
Actually, could you take H separately as well?
H, okay. So, I'll take a motion to approve Items D, F, G, I, J, K, and L under fiscal. Is there a motion to approve those? Ms. Cancro, in a second. Ms. Drummond, comments from the Board on those items? Mr. Winters?
So, the question I asked last week on number, on Item 9D related to the Fedavia, it seems like the, the term of the agreement is agreed to be through the fiscal year based on a three-year additional contract. Is this something that we could address in future years to get it to be through the summer? I assume that's the reason we're not trying to adjust this particular third year of the contract. Is that the correct way to understand this?
Any other questions or comments from the Board on these items? All those in favor? The motion carries eight-zero. Can I have a motion to approve Item E, the use of committed master plan funds? Ms. Hall, in a second. Mr. Navarette, any comments or questions from the Board? Mr. Earnshaw.
Just to refresh, I'll ask Mr. Booker to correct me if I'm wrong on any of these numbers. Just to refresh the Board on where this committed fund balance came from for the master plan. It's really two pieces. One was from the 2016-17 school year. A surplus of $400,000, just under, was transferred to this fund. And out of last year's budgetary surplus, about $2 million was transferred to this fund, which put about 2.4 million in. And during this year, we've already moved $625,000 out to the Capital Reserve Fund. So, this proposal is to move another $551,000 to the Capital Reserve. Also, just so everyone's aware, that cumulative budget surpluses, as I've mentioned before, from 2012 to '13 through the end of last year have totaled about $7.5 million. While these surpluses have tremendously strengthened a district's financial position and fund balance, we're now at the point where, for the past two years and likely this year, we're voting what to do with the excess surplus. And last year's vote resulted in $2 million being added to the committed fund balance at a time when we thought the budgetary surplus was going to be just around $1.5 million. And for the current fiscal year, the latest forecast shows a budgetary surplus of around $1 million as well, based on the latest forecast we reviewed at the Finance Committee meeting. Given those surpluses, as I've stated before, I'd like to see some of those returned to taxpayers. So, what I'm going to propose is an amendment to this item that would return $1 million to taxpayers over three years, and I spread it over three years so that it doesn't create any significant budget issues in any one year. Approving this motion would enable us, without any other changes, to reduce the tax increase from next year from 1.862% to around 1.2 to 1.3%. So, I propose, make a motion to amend this motion to read as follows. Approve the allocation of $1 million from the master plan committed funds to a fund entitled Operating Expense Growth Committed Funds, and approve the use of the balance in operating expense growth committed funds to offset growth in the district's expenses as follows. The 2019-'20 fiscal year, $500,000; the 2021-'20-'21 fiscal year, $350,000; and the 2021-'22 fiscal year, $150,000. And to approve the use of all remaining master plan committed funds to pay for the summer 2019 master plan projects.
Is there a second?
Yeah, a second.
Okay.
Let's discuss.
Mr. Navarette, let's discuss the amendment then.
So, Brian, I admire, I admire what you're trying to do, but I just think we're going about it the wrong way by doing that. We have, in the past, I think all nine of us that are sitting here, strongly rejected a similar move in the past, where there was a year recently where there was a 0% tax increase that was pushed through, where they took roughly $1 million from the sale of our buses and used it to offset operating expenses. And then, when we did that, we created a giant hole in the budget. Now, I appreciate that you don't want to create that giant hole. We're going to create smaller holes, but those smaller holes are still cumulative, and still there are 500, and there are 850, and there are $1 million. That still has to be made up by tax revenue or budget cuts. There's other ways to go about that. I think the way that we have aggressively approached trying to cut out of this budget and replace those cuts with programs that are more important, more critical, more desired, I think is a better way to go about it. I think when you look at the idea of taking the $2.1 million and applying, I guess there's two issues here. One is, there's a Capital Reserve, which I'm hopeful, maybe, Tim, you have some data on what neighboring districts look like. Our Capital Reserve looks poor. When you compare it to where we are with neighboring districts, it's not good. We're half, a third of what neighboring districts are as a proportion of our annual spend. And then, you get to the part about master plan spending, and, and, you know, I guess you're allocating, I guess, maybe half a million dollars less than what I'm talking about. We take a, we take that $2.1 million, and we use that to offset our borrowing this year. We have essentially taken $900,000 in interest expense out of our budget over the term of that bond. Now, it's not as, as short-term and aggressive as, as what you've proposed, but that is the case, and it, and it does come out in perpetuity. That's not money that needs, that needs to be made up. That is flat expense that we've taken out. And that, that $900,000 is based on the fact that we're paying, over the life of these bonds, 35, 40, 45% interest now because of the way this wraparound is structured. I can't support it. I don't, I just don't think it's a smart thing to do. I don't think, in a very basic way, I don't think we should be taking one-time money and using it to offset recurring operating expenses. That mistake has been made in the past. It's part of what's gotten us in the hole that we're in that we need to fix. I don't think that's the right way to go about it.
Respond to those points. I agree that what was done in a prior year with respect to the sale of buses was inappropriate. But I will say that these budgetary surpluses are really generating from excess expenses that are embedded in the budget. Granted, there are some one-time things, but I believe that there are excess expenses in this budget as evidenced by a $2.6 million surplus last year, granted some one-time items, but another $1 million that is yet to be explained of a surplus in this fiscal year. With respect to the Capital Reserve, I understand, I like to see the comparison of other districts as well, but I think what you've got to understand is that by the borrowings we're doing for the master plan, we are adding next year $6.5 million to the Capital Reserve, in effect. And another $8.5 million slated, I think, for the next eight years. So, I think that is more than sufficient funding to go into capital projects in this district.
I have a, I have a question. So, by your proposal, are you saying, I, I just wonder about, when you're saying the money is to be returned to the taxpayers, you mean literally a check that they receive or philosophically?
It would be in the form of a lower tax, lower percentage of a tax increase.
Okay, so more philosophically.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I agree with what Mr. Navarette is saying, and I firmly opposed in 2015 the use of the, the revenues generated from the sale of buses to offset tax increase. And I think, you know, taking a one-time source of revenue and using it to reduce taxes is inappropriate. And I, I get that you're making a distinction, but I, I guess I just disagree that it is different. To me, it's still part of the same. I think that using this to reduce our finances, reduce our, our bonds and our borrowing in the future, knowing the capital projects that we have ahead of us, seems like it's the more appropriate way to go about doing this. Are there any other comments from members of the Board?
I just, I guess the question is, at least from the administrative perspective, is, so should, with, with the assumptions that you're making, Mr. Earnshaw, would, would you then expect us to land on zero, like, like actually hit the, the budgeted number on an annual basis? Because the challenge, as we've explained in a number of other situations, the surpluses that you're referring to all had clear and articulated reasons for what they, they resulted in. Some were sales of the bus, some happened to be related to the three days in a teacher strike. And while, while certainly we don't want to have surpluses that are unreasonable, but to be within 1% of, 1.5% of the actual operating budget and always come in on the black, I think that's, that's, that's a reflection on the work that the building principals do, that the directors do, to make sure that A, we're providing the services and programs for our students, and B, we're, we're making sure that we're just not spending just to spend and get to zero. Because I can tell you that districts do do that. We do not. And, and while we, while we certainly have surpluses, right now, I can tell you that the fact that we have a surplus and we can have this conversation about reducing the debt that we'll put on, on the back of the taxpayers, I think that's a tremendous opportunity for nine members of the Board, or eight here this evening, to pass a proposed recommendation from the administration to take care of, of the business of operating these schools and making sure that our schools, the facilities that our students attend, are well-maintained and kept for, for the long haul. So, while I appreciate, appreciate everyone's opinion, I really think that it, it's not always a good business decision to figure out how to cut. You sometimes have to invest, and the investment can go a long way in, in encouraging, you know, future growth, either through attracting people to the district and, and so forth. So, I hope that, you know, the Board, you know, makes, you know, the proper decision here in moving forward with this matter. Thank you.
If I could just respond to that. My expectation is not that the administration would ever land at zero. That just would, makes zero sense. I, I fully understand that. My expectation is that you spend the money you need to provide a quality education and you budget appropriately. So, to the extent, and you, you mentioned that the explanations for the budget surpluses, while I agree that was, it was explained last year, and as I mentioned, it did include one-time items, but I've seen nothing to explain the $1 million projected for the current fiscal year. year. So, and I also have not yet seen an explanation for the expectation of spending for May and June of this year in comparison to the prior year, where it would increase, forecasted expenditure increase of about 15% in those last two months of the fiscal year. So I don't think this is unrealistic. I don't think this is using one-time expenses, and I just think it's appropriate, we have the opportunity to provide some tax relief without jeopardizing the district's finances or the quality of education that can be provided.
Any other comments from the board?
Yeah, I just wanted to add, I feel that by doing this, I think in my way of reducing taxes going forward is looking, and we're being aggressive reducing operating expenses now, but our next goal is looking at staffing in the next several years, and looking at programming and the appropriate staffing that goes with the programming, and that's where I think, as we go forward, we'll see reduction of increases in taxes, in my opinion. I do think, overall, the debt services will be lowered if we apply this to what's recommended. So that's where I feel that, hopefully, that's where our savings will go in the future.
Yeah, just one more. I'm going back, and I'm glad I have my computer to look at this. As I go back and look at the presentation that Tim did at the end of last year, we looked at why there were the discrepancies that we had that led to the $2 million plus surplus. And when you look at where they were, most of them were all one-time items that we addressed, and the ones that were recurring, we have taken care of in the budget. We talked about a consolidated position in the maintenance department, right? That's been fixed in this budget. We talked about MEA tuition reimbursement. We talk about the lease payments that were masked by the $1 million technology lease. That's been addressed now. We talked about private school tuition. We talked about detention center tuition. We talked about utilities that were coming in under budget that has been addressed now that we've locked down. I think we're doing the right things. And I got to tell, Brian, I love what you, how you have forced the envelope on this forecast. I fully support it. I'm going to miss your voice in the Finance Committee next year pushing for this because I wholeheartedly support it, and I will put that right on my back, and I'll beat them over the head with it. And I agree, we'll see where we come out. I'm not going to put all my money on the $1 million that we're forecasting for this year yet. It's still an early model. We'll see what comes out in the end. But I think we've done the work, looking at where we ended last year to where we look at this year's budget, excuse me, the next year's budget. We've got this intermediate step to work out with the forecast still that we'll continue to refine and move forward, but I look at the work that we did and say that we did that heavy lifting. There's more to do. We'll learn more when we come out at the end of this year, but I just, I don't think taking this money, when we're in such desperate need of capital funds, when we look at our master plan, the hole we're in, to take those and give, essentially give money back in a lower tax increase now that we're going to have to take back later in a higher tax increase.
All right, so there's no other comments from the board. We'll take a vote on the amendment. Can you read it again, Brian? I'm sorry.
Sure. Sure. Approve the allocation of $1 million from the master plan committed funds to a fund entitled operating expense growth committed funds. Approve the use of the balance in operating expense growth committed funds to offset growth in the district's expenses as follows: 2019-20 fiscal year, $500,000; 2020-21 fiscal year, $350,000; 2021-22 fiscal year, $150,000; and approve the use of all remaining master plan committed funds to pay for summer 2019 master plan projects.
Thank you, Mr. Earnshaw.
And a moment comment on the motion?
No, not at this time. So I'll take a vote now on the proposed amendment. So all those in favor of approving the motion, or I'm sorry, the item as presented with the proposed amendment? All those in favor? All those opposed? Okay, the motion does not carry, 1 to 7, with Mr. Earnshaw in favor and the remaining board members present being opposed. So with that, I will return to the motion that was originally on the table to approve the recommendation by the administration as presented on the agenda here this evening. So are there comments from the board or Dr. Zerby on that?
Yeah, I just want to make one point. There is a typo on the motion. So the motion, instead of saying master plan committee funds, it should say master plan committed funds, just for clarification.
Okay, so do we have comments from the board on the motion as presented on the agenda this evening, Mr. Ryan?
Thank you. I said a lot last week, but I'll just try to follow up on some of them. Did we do some research on the capital reserve from the other school districts?
Yes. So they range from, depending on the school, 0% of their budget, meaning that they'd have no cash, such as Norristown, all the way up to 20% or $20 million at Upper Marion. The lowest one that had reported a capital reserve was at $2.8 million, and that was Lower Marion, followed by Sauterston at $3.6 million.
So besides Norristown, this would make us the lowest that you saw?
There's a couple other zeros in there, too, that they just don't have, such as North Penn. They don't use the capital reserve there.
I think if you look at their audited statements, they have almost, sorry, I did do some of this research. Give me a second here.
They've chosen to use it, that's why.
Yeah, their last audited statements show almost $8 million, $9 million sitting in there.
They're building something, they've taken that out.
Exactly. But so my point there is that they built up a substantial amount of money in their capital reserves to, what did you say?
They're building something.
To build something. That's just the point that I'm getting at there. And I just bring that up, I mean, PV has more, Sauterston has more, and some of them are harder to find because they just say committed or assigned, so you don't exactly know what they're for, but Wissahicken has substantial amount designated for specific schools, high school, middle school, elementary schools, totaling for Wissahicken at $19 million. Now, I'm not saying we have the same financial situation as them, but aside from that, I'd like to do some cost analysis. So we have a recommendation from the administration, and I believe part of the Finance Committee here. So by doing this, we would, the motion which we approved on H was not to exceed $6.8 million. If we approve this, item E, along with the other movements involved, it would reduce that borrowing not to exceed 6.8 to around 4.7. Is that correct?
That is correct.
By reducing the borrowing from 6.8% to 4.7%, what is the interest rate savings we'll achieve over the life?
I'd actually have to do the math on that, but it would be probably 3% on $2.1 million over 10 years, roughly?
It's about $900,000. If you look at the last plan that we saw from PFM, and the, just rough numbers, right? It was about, I think it was nine point, I should just pull it up, actually, Brian, but it was nine point something against the 6.8 bar. It worked out to be 44% interest on the principal overall, over the life of the bond. So even if you take a proportional amount, which I know isn't the exact right way you would do that, but are you waving me off? Oh. I was like, all right. So 44% at 2.1 is about $900,000. So I might be off by a little bit, but it puts you in the right ballpark.
And again, sometimes my questions are semi-leading here, but this brings up the idea of, we go to vote on an item that's a recommendation without necessarily seeing the other possibilities. You know, Brian has a good point here, right? He has a belief that, you know, over the things that have occurred over the last couple of years, and his recommendation would be to provide tax relief in future years. That is an alternative use of what these funds are for. The recommendation that we see here is in front of us, but there are other things, such as, do we have any outstanding debt currently that would be callable or irretirable in the next year or two?
I don't believe so, not at this time.
Okay, I would just be curious to see if that's true. I was trying to find some of the old information we had. I thought we had one coming next year. But the idea of that some of this borrowing that we have, which is starting to come closer to the end, would be at a higher interest rate than what we're currently borrowing at now, which would lead you to the question of, what would be the savings of, if possible, retiring that debt versus the savings of reducing the current debt at the lower one? And another alternative would be, as I mentioned before, to hold this money for future use. And you can get into the same type of comparison purposes there, future comparison. The current interest rate now versus what is assumed to be, at a minimum, a flat interest rate, or what has been expected as, you know, a creeping interest rate. We know, we were originally told that that would be going up and going up and going up, and let's start, and then drop right back down. But the point is that we're at a relatively low period right now in the building of a new school for Arrowhead, we're probably, I'll take a guess and say, 18 months out at best, or renovating Arrowhead for 18 months out. Whatever that time period is, the interest rate will most likely be higher. What is the cost comparison savings of this? So my point being, without all of that information and a way to properly evaluate if this is the right move at the current time, I still find this motion hard to get behind, hard to vote for. I will say, I don't know that there's necessarily a wrong answer here, but I think that trying to find the best answer isn't really possible at this time.
Okay, to address Mike's questions about the idea of holding that money to offset future borrowing, it's a good one, right? It is, it does become a mathematical exercise because it would be the potential for savings, say, if interest rates were higher, now we're borrowing less at a lower interest rate. There's also the question of bank qualification, right? There's a $10 million per year limit on bank qualification, but for that to come into play, we probably would need probably some additional money, aside from just the 2.1. So my only trouble with that, Mike, is that there's some other assumptions that would have to go into that. I agree, it's not a question of a right or wrong decision in this case, it's a what's best. I think you're right, I think there's probably more information needed. At the end of the day, though, all of these ifs and whats come down to an interest rate play, and the question is whether or not we're in the business of gambling on interest rates. Certainly, we've talked about interest rates going up. The experts talked about interest rates going up, they did. They peaked, I don't know, Glenn's sitting there, he could probably tell me, it was October, all right. They peaked, and then they came right, they came back down almost as far as they were before. So I don't know where they sit today, but that's not a game that I think we should be playing here. I don't think that's our, that aligns with our fiduciary responsibility. I think in the moment, we have this, we have this opportunity in front of us, let's offset the borrowing that we have now. Even if you say that, you know, through that $900,000 number out there for interest over the life of the debt, even if you account for the interest payments over the next two years that we would make, and just assume, you know, the similar structure so that it's roughly proportional, you're still talking savings of $200,000 in the next two years. So there's still money coming back to taxpayers by doing this. This is the smart thing to do. We can argue about whether how much belongs in the capital reserve versus how much goes to offset the bond. I think that's a, that's a no-win game there, right? We could have that discussion all night. But based on what I know, I think the recommendation for the administration is fair. It sets us up for, in position, we're starting to build our capital reserve again. For me, that's going to be a focus going forward. I've said it before in Finance Committee meetings, I've said it in this board, in this meeting here, we need to start contributing to our capital reserve. We can't continue to borrow. Even if you look at our neighbors that run our township where we're having this meeting right now, Worcester Township, they build, they build, they build, they build, and then they take out capital projects. That's the right way to do it. We've been left in a big hole, but I think we've got to do the right thing to build ourselves out of it.
Any other comments from the board, Mr. Earnshaw?
Yeah, just a question. As far as other districts, when you look at other districts, are any of those districts borrowing $8.5 million a year over the next eight years to fund capital projects?
I did not look into their borrowing, no.
Okay, so comparing their capital reserve versus what we're doing is a little bit of apples and oranges, I would think, in my opinion, anyway. And that $900,000, is that the gross amount, or is that the local effort required to service that debt?
That's a great point. I think it might be the gross amount, based on the numbers I looked at. So it's probably a little bit less than, probably 800, maybe? Is that a good guess, Glenn?
Well, we're assuming there's no reimbursement.
Okay, oh, good point.
Any other comments from the board? All right, starting to lose my place in the meeting here. So we have a motion on the table to approve item E, the use of committed master plan funds. Let's take a vote at this time. All those in favor? Opposed? The motion carries with Mr. Earnshaw and Mr. Ryan being opposed. All right, moving on to item H. Can I have a motion to approve the transportation contract amendment as presented here this Mr. Nevarret and a second Ms. Drummond, comments from the board? Mr. Earnshaw?
Just a question from Mr. Pricker. I believe these rates over the contract go up 1.7% after next year, each year?
Each year, yes.
And what's the increase over the current rates now, on average?
The current rate that were originally in the contract or the current rate?
What we're paying now.
I can tell you in a few seconds. Estimated at about 6.67%.
Yeah, I'm sorry I missed this part of the meeting last weekend. I had to check out for my Max Headroom appointment. The, I'm glad this is settled, and I wish First Student was sitting here with us today. I was extremely disappointed in the way that this went down, in the way that this came about in the first place, with minimal notice to the administration, that it came about by letter, there wasn't a conversation about it, and that they were canceling the contract, all based on their hasty agreement last year because Tim was doing his due diligence and holding back money because they weren't billing us properly, and they hastily agreed to a lower per root amount, and then came back and said, well, that's no good, we can't do that, we need more money the way the contract is structured. I understand that. I work in business, manage contracts, I get that. But there's also a way to treat your customers. This wasn't it. I am, however, glad that they did step up to the table and then provided us some less tangible compensation, I would say, in terms of the GPS monitoring, in terms of the GPS turn-by-turn directions, some of the other things that were mentioned. The fact that the terms of the contract, in terms of annual agreements, 1.7% is certainly, you know, within our means as a district, which is positive. I'm glad that we are in a five-year agreement and we won't have to endure this kind of treatment from them again. I hope we can repair this relationship, that we know they didn't start on a great foundation here. This doesn't put them very high in my book. I know, I think, Kim, you were on the phone with me when we first heard about this, and I was none too pleased, and my first reaction was, we walk. But certainly, that wasn't the fiscally prudent thing to do. So I'm glad this is settled. I look forward to future conversations with the leadership of First Student.
Any other comments from the board? All right, then we'll take a vote on approving the transportation contract amendment. All those in favor? Opposed? Okay, the motion carries, 7 to 1. And please note that I did double-check the attachments, and it looks like everything is correct on the agenda at this time, so I apologize for any oversights that there may have been. Moving on. Moving on to personnel items. Mr. Regina.
Thank you. A number of items for the board's consideration this evening. The first one is professional resignations. We do have an added item, item number five, the Stacy Alitsky resignation. And I know we have some questions about the reasoning sometimes, so there's a relocation involved with that individual. We have one item for classified resignations. We have three items for job descriptions. We have one item for classified employment. This is a new item from the Work Session Agenda. This is a replacement position. We had a resignation on the April Agenda of the Office Assistant at the High School. We also had a change of status update from the Eagleville Office Assistant to the High School Office Assistant in that same agenda, and this is filling that position at Eagleville. We have one change of status for professional. We have two compensated leave, professional leave, excuse me. We have three items for professional uncompensated leave. One of those is additional, item three, and that's for medical purposes. And item one, there is a date extension on that from the Work Session Agenda. We have two items for classified uncompensated leave. Six items for supplemental contracts, and there is one additional item to that. It is the additional item number six, which is the .5 teacher that stayed to assist us with PSSA testing. And we have one item for volunteers.
Would any board members like to take any of the personnel items separately? Okay, then can I have a motion to approve all items listed under Personnel here this evening? Mr. Navarrett, second, Ms. Drummond. Comments from the board? Mr. Nav, I'm sorry, Mr. Earnshaw?
Question on item G, the change of status. And I know, I watched the video and I saw your comments about this last week, and it gave me a thought. So we have TOAs that are moving back into non-TOA jobs, some same, some not. Are we going to do exit interviews with them to, I mean, I think it's an interesting position where you've got somebody kind of taking a cold eye look from the outside. Looking, it might be interesting to hear their feedback on, you know, their experiences in that job. I don't know how often we do that for internal moves, but I think something like that, where we have somebody that's working in a completely different position that they worked in before, maybe we can, maybe we can learn something from them.
That's a great point. They weren't scheduled, but I think there's certainly merit in that, so thank you.
Mr. Earnshaw?
Sorry. Mr. Regina, did I hear right at the beginning of the meeting that there were 10 retirees?
That's, that's correct.
And how does that reconcile to what I see on the agenda?
That's throughout the year, so, yes, yeah, that's correct.
Got it.
No problem.
Any other comments from the board? Okay, all those in favor? Motion carries eight zero. Curriculum and Programs, Dr. Petono.
Thank you. The first item is the textbook that is available for review. I just want to mention again that this will not be approved until June. This is the AP Bio that we would like to bring back to the board in June for approval. One book was originally approved in April, and this would replace that text. We are also seeking the federal programs approval to accept those funds for Title I, Title II, Title III, and Title IV A for the 1920 school year, and also to approve the granting of diplomas to members of the Math Act in Class of 2019.
All right, does anyone want to take any of the items under Curriculum and Programs separately? All right, then may I have a motion to approve all items under Curriculum and Programs here this evening? Ms. Drummond?
Hold on.
I'm sorry?
Yeah, it would be items B and C under that.
Yes, correct. There is no motion, or no, no item to approve under A, so it's 11B and C. So motion to approve items 11B and C. Ms. Drummond and a second, Mr. Earnshaw. Comments from the board? Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion carries eight zero. Under Policy, we have, go ahead, Dr. Zerbi.
The items for Second Reading are on the agenda. There are, there are 10 total. That's Policy 117, Homebound Instruction, 118, Independent Study, 119, Current Events, 220, Student Expression, 239, Foreign Exchange Students, 610, Purchases Subjects to Bid, 611, Purchases Budgeted, 814, Copyright, 815, Acceptable Use, and 815.1, Social Media.
Does anyone from the board want to take any of the items under Policy separately? All right, so then may I have a motion to approve all policies listed under Second Reading here this evening? Mr. Winters, the second, Mr. Ryan, any comments from the board? Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion carries eight zero. Under Gifts and Donations, we have a gift from Student Council in the Class of 2019 to be used towards the purchase of a portable press box. We have a gift from the Math Act and Education Foundation that we heard about earlier this evening. We have three trips presented. Does anyone want to take any of these items separately? Mr. Navarrett?
Just a quick question on item two. The total gift value is correct, but, and maybe Mrs. Karlovich can confirm, but she said that the Robotics Club donation was 2,000, not 2,500, as listed in the agenda. Does that need to be fixed as far as the motion goes? Is that important? Mr. Summers?
That is correct. 2,000 to Robotics, the total value of the gift is 11,000.
So would the individual who made the motion and seconded it be willing to revise it to reflect the $2,000 amount?
We don't even have a motion yet, so...
Okay, well, that can be reflected in the motion.
All right, so then let's have a motion to approve the Gifts and Donations and Trips with the change in the value of the donation, or the gift to the Robotics Club to $2,000. Third motion, Mr. Winters, and a second, Mr. Navarrett. Any comments from the board? Mr. Earnshaw?
Just one question. Mr. Bricker, as far as the Class of 2019 account, does this zero out the balance in that account? Or will it be zero at the end of the school year?
It'll be the end, it'll be zero before the end of the school year.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions from the board? All right, all those in favor? The motion carries eight zero.
Madam President, if I may, our financial advisor, as well as, I think, Bond Counsel, have requested that with regard to item 9I, which was the Resolution Number 19-05 Master Plan, that the votes of the board be reflected in a roll call. So if we could just have a roll call vote to indicate each, how each particular board member voted with regard to that particular item.
Absolutely. So we'll take a roll call vote on item 9I. We'll start down here with Mr. Navarrett.
Yes.
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 Okay. You're welcome. All right, so for dates for board members' calendars, we have our regular meetings coming up. On June 4th, there is a special public meeting. I know it's not reflected on the agenda here, but it's been publicized many other places. It's the next meeting in our Arrowhead Forward Project. Is there anything for old business? Anything for new business? All right, then at this time, we'll take courtesy of the floor. Dr. Malik.
Jim Malik, Warsester. Thank you, Mr. Earnshaw. The most qualified financial person on this board, who should have been listened to. The rest of the comments I heard regarding the surplus were scary, absolutely scary. The person who really shouldn't have said anything was Dr. Zerbi. Over six years, $7 million in surpluses. And I'm going by what Mr. Earnshaw said, I didn't do the right to know requests, because I trust him on the figures. I heard somebody say that it's not a one-time event. People aren't listening to what's going on up there. 16, a million dollars. 17, 18, 2.6, and this year projected to be close to a million. Well, that's three years straight. According to Mr. Earnshaw, over six years, that's 7 million. So it's more than a one-time event. So people up front aren't listening to what's going on, and they're not doing the research. So I suggest that people up front start doing some research and start listening. So what it boils down to is if you're Mr. Earnshaw, you know, we've been overtaxed. We've been overtaxed for six years. And he's suggesting using the overtaxation and using half of it to apply it to next year's overtaxation, and then use the other half to reduce the debt. But if you're Mr. Navarrett, he's going to use the overtaxation to pay down the debt. Well, I don't like that option. Doesn't make sense to me. And then overtax again. So overtaxation on infinitum per Mr. Navarrett, and no tax relief ever. That's the Navarrett plan. My question to Dr. Zerbi is, who picked KCBA architects? Can anybody tell me? I can't find out. Because the reason I ask is somebody negotiated a contract that's hourly. They're all hourly. They got, it's like a blank check. Did you do that? How come there's no cap? Why would you negotiate an hourly contract with no cap and give them a blank check? Can somebody tell me? The board have anything to do with that? The fiscally responsible board? Why would you negotiate a contract with no cap on an hourly contract? Can somebody tell me up there? And why didn't it go out to bids? Any answer? Especially a contract where the contractor, KCBA, is pro reconstruction, pro building a new school. Did you know that ahead of time, when you pick these people without any competition? It's right in the contract. I'm sure you saw it, right? Their gig is they like to build new schools. No competition, hourly. Well, because they're hourly, they don't have to go out to bids. Who did it all? Did you do it all?
Thank you, Dr. Malik.
Think you can get me some answers?
Thank you, Dr. Malik.
You'll be hearing from me in an email.
Anyone else for courtesy at the floor? Mr. Bickelman?
Joe Bickelman, Audubon. I can't believe you guys don't talk to the public. That's, that's terrible. I don't know who's telling you to do that. It's ridiculous. I guess the first thing I'd like to talk about is this 6.67% increase from First Student's 1920 rates for 2021. A 6.67% increase. How does that go through? On a $5 million bill, which it approximates for year, for the year, that's an increase of $333,000, as opposed to a more palpable increase of 1.7, which would be $85,000. That's a difference of $248,000 that you cave to. That's ridiculous. My wife works for First Student. She's not going to get a 6.67% raise. I don't know how that happened. It's a quarter million dollars. Hey, you know, get a new company. Don't stand for that stuff. 6.67%? Mr. Bricker, you mentioned that you have $288 in the budget per bus. I believe you mentioned that, right? At a meeting? There's only seven buses on the list that have a maximum amount per bus of $266. Seven of those types of buses that are commanded $266 rate, not $288. So I'm a little confused about the statement about, that you made about the $288. There are five retirements in the budget. I mean, there are five retirements not in the budget as the budget sits right now. And that's probably $250,000 of savings. Mrs. Reese spoke to the complicated matter of some of the teachers. We have an elementary counselor, a high school counselor, a French teacher, a German teacher, and an FCS teacher. You might want to poll surrounding districts concerning FCS curriculum being offered in other high schools. I don't know if it's prevalent in all 21 districts in Montgomery County, but you have a retirement now, so you might want to look at that curricula. I think the forecast for your end of year for 1920 should start in January, and the board should be aware of where all the surpluses exist. And I think it does. Mr. Bricker's a pretty responsible guy, but I, I think it gets stopped somewhere along the line. I know he would make forecasts. I know he knows how to do it. He's very good at what he does. So I think that information gets stopped somewhere along the line, because everybody asks for it up here. Brian asked for it, he doesn't get it. Personnel needs. Personnel needs should start in October of the prior year before the next year for the budget, like secondary curriculum person, elementary curriculum person. It should start, all those personnel needs should start there. Teaching personnel needs should start after students select courses. You shouldn't, as a board, make an expenditure approval of $360,000 for two new administrative positions. This stuff should start in September, October, November during, in the budget process.
Thank you, Mr. Bickelman. Is there anyone else for courtesy at the floor?
So you have my opinion.
Mr. Andrews.
John Andrews, Lower Providence. A few minutes ago, one of your directors, Mr. Earnshaw, proposed an amendment to a motion. It's something that he, in my being present at committee meetings and meetings in this room, know that he worked long and hard on that. He's a financial whiz that we won't have after, after the November meeting. And I'm truly disappointed that, whereas some other people on the board are not financial whizzes, why they wouldn't respect one and favor his opinion. The other thing relative to the budget is that I believe it probably underestimates the inter-
the interim taxes to be collected in the upcoming year, and I've spoken to that previously relative to a number of substantial projects. So, you know, I think there's continuing administrative interest in creating surpluses, and, you know, maybe that's a backdoor attempt at financing something at Arrowhead, and I will be speaking in the future relative to overall issues of facility utilization. If we have 58% utilization at Skyview Aracola, and tons of debt, and the index controlling how much we can tax, that we need to be efficient, and I would hope that people give more consideration to that. I'd also like to compliment all of the individuals relative to the REACH program. I think that appears to be a success, and I think it should be continued. Relative to the physiological or mental health issues relative to that, I think the REACH program is correctly focused on grades seven and eight. And I think that people who specialize in mental health might say that a lot of the issues are not exhibited across all the grades, and they may not be exhibited, for instance, in grades five and six. So, you know, don't blindly implement that across all the grades where, because in some grades, those issues don't appear. And, you know, I think, you know, possibly the freshman and sophomore years in high school may be more critical than grades five and six. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Andrews. Anyone else for courtesy of the floor? All right. Mr. Navarrett?
Yeah, just two points of clarification. If you guys remember, the KCBA contract that we approved back in March had a total maximum, had a total maximum dollar value amount of $8,750. Second point, Joe, you were asking about the 6.67% increase. I think it's important to note that the, in the interim there, and Tim, correct me if I'm wrong, I want to make sure I get the right information out there, from that year four to year five in the contract, because Tim was withholding payment from them because we told them they were billing us incorrectly. They negotiate, because we were billing at that time based on actual runtimes, correctly, Tim? Right? Correct me if I'm wrong. Jump in here. And Tim was going back bird-dogging them on the actual times they were billing us for versus what the buses were there for, and was withholding their cash from them. They acquiesced to a lower rate of fixed rate per route of $270 per route.
Correct.
So the 6.67% increase is an increase over that $270, or what Tim had calculated previously was on the order of that same, like, what was it? What did you figure before? $280-ish? Was it $282 the year prior on average?
We figured that the rate would have been around $282.
Yeah. So it was in that neighborhood, plus or minus a couple dollars, but I want to make sure that that's clear, so...
So they agreed to the $270?
Yes.
No, no, we can't have back and forth. I'm sorry. That's...
I can fill you in after the meeting. They agreed to a lower rate, and then after that, they can't...
They agreed to a rate?
Yes, and then they canceled the contract.
Mr. Bickelman, I'm sorry. We can't have back and forth with the audience at this time.
Apologize, Kim.
All right. Can I have a motion to adjourn? Mr. Winters, and a second, Ms. Drummond. Meeting is adjourned.